Okay, that's right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City Council meeting for the night of July 21, 2009. Will you all please stand and join me in pledging allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, the clerk calls roll.
Councilmember Fox?
Here.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña is absent at this time. Councilmember Irwin?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Gillette?
Here.
Mayor Glancy?
Here.
Request for a continuous of any public hearings or agenda item. Mr. Mittmick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Item number A, D, Public Hearing on the Housing Element. That's being continued to a date uncertain. That'll likely come back in September or October. And then item 7S, the Investment Policies Report. That's a consent item, but we request to move it to a department report, and that would then appear as item 9D. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now's the time for a special presentation, so give me a second. I'll get down there to the... Taya's beam.
It'll...I'm sorry, it'll be the last department report. My records show 9D. If it's 9D, so be it.
Thank you very much. You know, it's gonna happen every time we come down here, so plan ahead. I'd like to invite Canoe Recreation Park District Vice Chair Joe Gibson and General Manager Jim Friedel to join me. Gentlemen?
Very good to see you.
Good to speak.
Yeah, CRPD and the city have had a longstanding relationship, working together to provide some neat amenities to our community. The most recent one was the warm-up pool over at CLU. It's been a great success. It's a beautiful result, and it took a lot of effort, but it shows you how we can maximize our capabilities by joining forces with someone with whom we can work, and it really has been great. Tonight, we have Joe and Jim here to recognize valuable work being...that's accomplished by the Park District. And the services they provide, foster community spirit by bringing together friends and families. They provide programs that promote health and wellness. They provide, in my mind, one of the most important things, a safe place for our children to recreate and participate with likes. And also a great place for seniors to get some exercise, rather than having to walk the malls all the time. It's nice to walk a park. Recognition is certainly well deserved. It's my pleasure to present this proclamation, claiming July's National Parks and Rec Month. So, gentlemen? And... Bill, you wanna talk?
Sure. Absolutely, you've got it.
All right.
Tom, members of the council, thank you very much. This is a fantastic relationship, I think, that the district and the city have. The things that we have done together, most recently is Mayor Glancy indicated, the warm-up pool over at CLU. The things this community does, at our last board meeting, we got to see a clip of the tape that was "What's Great About Thousand Oaks." And I think really what's great about Thousand Oaks is the relationships we have and how we work together. Put our differences aside now and then, you know, for the greater benefit of the community. It's been my privilege for the last 10 years to, you know, work on behalf of the Park District, work with the city, and understand what we do. The senior center, the teen center, the CLU pool, the list goes on and on and on. So, Mayor Tom, thank you for this proclamation tonight. We appreciate it. And Jim, if you want to add anything?
If I may be so bold, I'd just like to make the commercial plug for all the fantastic programs that the district offers, and we do send these out quarterly to everybody that lives in the community. So, spend a little time thumbing through our rec guide and try to find something that you're really interested in doing and give one of our programs a try. We're here for you, the community, and again, a lot of what we do is because of the city's help, assistance, and cooperation, so thank you.
And guys, thank you very much for providing the services that you do to our community and our citizens. It's a great job, and we just look for things to continue to develop, so thank you very, very much. Our next presentation was to be American Cancer Society's Canoe Valley Relay for Life. They're unable to make it this evening, but on August 29th, I'll be at their opening ceremonies, and I'll present the certificate at that time. I'd like to say a few words about one of our residents that just this July 16th completed a journey of 28,000 miles in 13 months and landed back here at the age of 17. He's the youngest fellow to complete this task successfully. He's a remarkable fellow, absolutely remarkable, and we tried to get him here for tonight, but David Letterman trumped us, and so he's not gonna be here tonight. However, we are trying to arrange with his family a time when we can get him down to City Hall and honor him appropriately, but he is a remarkable young man, and so we certainly wish him well with all the after effects. Okay? Wish good or what? That...that's it? We had as one of our special presentations tonight, a gentleman named Inger. David Inger, who was the Energy Project Manager for Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance, who was gonna tell us tonight. Don't bother to sit down.
Mr. Mayor, he's here today? I don't think he is, no. Councilmembers? Oh, there he is. I'm David Inger, a victim of the 101 Southbound, which I'm sure has happened to all of you before. I'm here with the representative of Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance, a joint powers agency, which I'm proud to know that the City of Thousand Oaks is a charter member. And the reason for my being here today is basically to recognize the great work done by your city staff in really moving forward and having a vision to make the city's energy efficient as possible. I think this is the third time we've made a presentation to your council. This particular presentation really recognizes the great work done by Chuck Rogers, who of course is here, in really having a great vision for the Hill Canyon Wastewater Treatment Plant, to not only make it energy efficient, but truly make it energy independent. I was looking back over some of our past records, and I wanted to note that because the efforts of people like Chuck and your facilities people, the working in collaboration with you, the city has saved over a million kilowatt-hours in various projects it has done. It's reduced its demand by over 200 KW. You are basically saving $120,000 a year as a result of these projects, and we've been very fortunate to be able to reimburse you to the tune of about $165,000 over the last several years. So, I think the key word for me is collaboration. We've surely had the great benefit of that, working with you and your staff. So with that, I would like to provide you with this honorary check. I believe you've already cashed the real one. This check represents work done at Hill Canyon, particularly some pumping upgrades and some controls upgrades, which has resulted in about 150,000 kilowatt-hours per year in savings, which turns out to be about $19,000 a year for this one project alone. Again, this is just a follow-up to the great work that Chuck has already completed on a number of other projects, and we've had the good fortune to collaborate with him and other members of the city staff. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, congratulations, and we hope to just continue this collaboration into the future.
Very much.
Thank you.
Try to get funds to Wyndham.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Sorry you had to fight the traffic.
Well, it's well worth it. Thank you very much.
Energy efficiency is certainly the first step in achieving sustainability, and that's the by-word for the century, I think. So, all the efforts that go in this direction are certainly well appreciated and very valuable. Okay. Public comments? Mr. Kidway.
I beg in the name of God, who's most beneficial, most merciful. Nick Igbal Kidway, resident of Newberry Park, director of Concerns, citizen of Thousand Oaks since 1993. Dear Mayor Glancy, to say that we are disappointed in your and Jackie's and the whole council performance would be an understatement, a gross understatement. You have turned out to be yes people to the misguided staff, lobbyists, and special interests. Voting against Home Depot will cost us a lot of money in the long run. The folks in Valle Cito Mobile Home Park need you to file an appeal to save those that finest generation. That's the kind of work that needs to be done. They are in a mess as staff has not gotten a good ordinance in place. In doing cleanup, I found a 1999 memo from Mr. Fox. He was on the Mobile Home Advisory Committee in 1999. I was going to find it, but too many papers. You are in no position, in my humble opinion and the opinion of many citizens, to take a hiatus or recess next month. Please see the attached Hurt...Tim Hurt article. I sent fax this earlier, so you should hopefully get there. About the $4 million hit to the City of Thousand Oaks, as well as the heart-wrenching letter from Newberry Park by a lady today in the store. You need to have a town hall meeting, as well as a meeting where you can discuss the important issues of the day, and that should be done in August, not in September or October. Looks like Congress even will not take a recess either. You need to address the cuts. The consent calendar has been abused for decades. You need to discuss issues as to how contracts are awarded, how changes are made in contracts, redevelopment shindigs, deficit supporting the Cavali Theater. Arts Commission could not even come up with a quorum for this month's meeting. I mean, things are bad. I mean, you would think that people are not here in public comments, that everything is hunky-dory. It's actually people have given up. I mean, it's very sad. I don't know why...I mean, I would love your vote, Mr. Fox. Last week, you were the only one that made sense. I appreciate that, but really, folks need to step up to the plate, and you're capable of doing a lot more. And you should really think seriously about meeting in August and cleaning up these things. The Canoe School District will meet on August 18th. That's a good week for you folks to meet, too. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Okay, consent calendar. Motion, comments? Dr. Schlett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had...wasn't one of the items in consent relocated to staff report? Seven...
7S has moved to 9D.
That's right. Okay. With the exception of 7S, I'll move consent.
Okay, Mr. Schlett, I need to cover a couple of consent comments.
Oh.
So give me just a second.
Yeah, that's fine. What's wrong?
Kathy Bernicki? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Kathy Bernicki. I'm the Executive Director of the Ventura County Homeless and Housing Coalition, and I brought you copies of our 2009 homeless count. I don't want you to think that I'm in the business of creating more homeless people so that you'll give me more money. That is not the objective, but I did want to speak to the count here in the City of Thousand Oaks. We had an increase here in our fair city. The entire increase could be attributed to an increase in the number of homeless families. And I do want you to know that this matches a trend that we are seeing nationwide. It's a little more severe in our city than it is nationally, but the Hudson released a report on July 9th, their annual update to Congress on homelessness, and that is where the increase is coming from nationally, so we fit right in with that trend. We do have efforts working here locally. The Canaho Affordable Housing Work Group meets monthly, and they have two committees that meet. I invite anyone in Thousand Oaks who would like to join our group to simply contact me readily available vchhc.org. Email me is the best way to get me. I am never in my office. The other thing I wanted to speak to on the consent calendar was the Homeless Prevention and Rapid Rehousing Program. You are being asked to throw in with three other cities, the cities of Camarillo and Ventura and Simi Valley. The reason we are asking you to submit a joint application is that we have the potential to get a significant increase in funding if we do submit a consolidated application. The Homeless Prevention and Rapid Rehousing Program, we've worked on very hard countywide, and by working together, we can create more money, so I hope that you will approve that, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I don't think there are any, but Kathy, I wanted to let you know how much City Council appreciates the work you do in the homeless arena and confirm for you that the city really takes it very seriously and wants to be involved and helpful. So thank you very much for your efforts.
We do appreciate your support also, so thank you.
Mr. Kidway?
Good evening, Mayor Glancy, Nick Kidway, Director of Concerns, citizen of Thousand Oaks, speaking on the consent calendar. Item number A, minutes. I don't know. I guess this will never improve. The minutes do not reflect what actually happened. You are taking shortcuts. This was done basically as a self-defensive measure against Eloise Zina. She's been long gone. I don't know why we cannot get basic minutes in this city. Number B, which is the homeless coalition issue that was just spoken to, these issues do not belong on a consent calendar. They should be on agenda, and there should be a report. I fully support the $15,000, but it's not enough, as was said. And lo and behold, you have more redevelopment money coming to you in the case of Enrique's restaurant, whom you awarded $100,000. It went out of business two, three weeks ago. That money is available. You should really redirect it and give it to the homeless and do it pronto. Number L regarding carpeting of the Newberry Park branch. I mean, nobody reads these...very few people read the item, and, you know, we in Newberry Park say that we are treated like stepchildren, and here's another wonderful example, that the carpeting for the library was the hand-me-down from 401 Hillcrest. No wonder it has always looked so bad. And there will be some money left over because the award came out to $84,000 and $150,000 was budgeted. I would implore you, and I know you folks completely ignore me or people who speak over here, but the balance of that money should be used in Newberry Park for the library, for additional books and all that, because as a user, it's completely not at par with what Thousand Oaks has. And $50,000, $60,000, I mean, it's already budgeted for Newberry Park, and that's a proper thing to ask. And the California State Preschool Program, I was very upset when you kicked out the wonderful operator, Ms. Laboue. The city has taken this over, but from what we read in the papers, that this is the money that Schwarzenegger has cut, so that's another reason. I mean, you're putting it on the agenda, what is going to happen in the future. There should be some discussion about this, especially for the sake of the kids and their parents who are in it. Once again, I stayed home last meeting. It's just very difficult. People were upset and can't make any change. I don't know. Maybe if you meet in August or in September, the consent calendar will be done according to the high standards and ideals of this great nation and that flag. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Mr. Schlett has a motion on the floor. I have you modify it, I assume, to remove items A, B, L, N, and S, which have just been discussed, and we have to approve them. So, motion on the floor to approve, except for S.
No, Mr. Mayor. The consent calendar, I'm moving approval to the consent calendar with the exception of S.
Yes, right. I corrected. Comments to the motion? Please vote.
The motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember Bill De La Peña absent, and I'm gonna read the ordinance titles for T, U, and V. An ordinance amending Article 7, Chapter 3, Title 4 of Thousand Oaks Municipal Code relative to truck routes. The ordinance adopting Section 424 of Chapter 3 of Title 4 of the code to establish parking restrictions for oversized vehicles on city streets. And an ordinance amending Section 423 of Chapter 3, Title 4 of the code regarding civil penalties for traffic violations.
Thank you. And would you please announce public hearing A Day?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A, Municipal Code Amendment to Modify the City's Film Permit Standards and Procedures, MCA 2008-70654. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding this public hearing. All documents should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking, and speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. We have one card, and the speaker will be allowed five minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ware? You've got it.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight before you is the return of the proposed changes in the city's film permit regulations. The issue was previously heard at the public hearing conducted by the City Council on June 23rd of this year. Other than the changes specifically directed by the City Council, the ordinance is the same as proposed and considered during that public hearing. The significant changes proposed in the ordinance from the existing regulations are the reduction of the written consent requirements for both the percentage of signatures needed and consent area while still protecting neighborhoods, modification to allowable filming days and hours, and other processing changes. Additionally, the ordinance proposes amending the city's weapons section to resolve a conflict created during the original adoption of the filming regulations. During the public hearing conducted on June 23rd, the City Council directed staff to modify the proposed amendment in three areas. One, raise the percentage of written consent required of adult occupants within the consent area from 80 to 90 percent, while not creating a situation where a single person has a veto power over the proposed filming. Two, to reduce the written consent radius from 300 to 200 feet. And three, modify language relating to still photography to take into consideration the limited impact this activity causes. Public notification for this hearing was provided to the same entities and individuals as the previous public hearing, including registered homeowners associations, the filming industry representatives, and interested individuals. As directed by the City Council, the draft amendment before you tonight has been changed to reflect both the increase to 90 percent for the written consent requirements and also the decrease in the consent area from 300 to 200 feet. Although the decrease from the existing 100 percent written requirement to 90 percent generally does remove the concern of a single person providing a veto to the filming request, this can still occur if the consent area has nine or fewer locations requiring consent, as one denial would mean the 90 percent approval could not be obtained. This condition would primarily be limited to an area that had large lots within the consent area. Individual examples of the 200, 300, and 500-foot written consent areas are depicted in the attachment four of the staff report on pages 25 through 27 of your packet. Two corrections to the draft amendment in your packet is, as noted in the memo to the City Manager date today, is to change the distance wording in proposed Section 4-8.03 Sub-A Sub-3 and number in 4-8.04B to reflect the 200-foot distance. This slide shows the three areas on one exhibit to provide an example in a common tract home situation of the difference between the three distances. The City Council also directed staff to change the standard for still photography in response to comments received during the last public hearing. Staff has achieved this by re-refining the definition for still photography, basically raising the threshold that would require a permit to be obtained. The language no longer defines still photography in which the photography is completely contained upon private property or photography activity is less than four hours in duration, therefore not needing a permit. For consistency, the written consent area for still photography over one day was also modified to be similar to the motion picture-filming requirement. Staff recommends introduction of MCA 2008-70654 and is available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ware. Questions for staff? Miss Bill De La Peña?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Thank you for the presentation. I have a question regarding the HOAs. There are several HOAs here, and you may have covered it at the beginning, but I arrived late. The...we have hundreds of HOAs which have their own CCNRs. Some of them much more restrictive than whatever the city may propose or may actually have on the books. How do we reconcile those two? Can we implement or include a clause that states that prior to any approval of any film permit, that they prove...show proof of HOA approval?
The practice of the city in the past is not to require a homeowners association to have an automatic say in city permits or policies that we would approve for a citizen, whether it be entitlement permits or any other type of permit we issue. You know, on entitlements, we do accept, you know, their comments, but we don't rely on their say for approving the permit. We rely on the city's regulations. As you sort of say upfront, the association does have the ability to regulate within its own CCNRs whether or not or how they would like... own CCNRs whether or not or how they would like filming to occur within their jurisdictions, and that would be enforced by them, not the city. This ordinance is meant to really accommodate the city as a whole and not looking at individual situations that may arise from one homeowners association to another. So staff would not recommend that we set a precedent here by providing a homeowners association an automatic say for a film permit. That being said, if filming activity that's proposed does take place on common area of a homeowners association, we do require existing, with our existing ordinance and the proposed ordinance, that an association would have to sign off as property owner. But that's only if the filming activity is actually occurring on common area property that the homeowners association has control. So in that particular case, they do have the ability to say really yes or no to filming activity. But when it's completely contained on private property, we would not recommend that the association have that ability to say yes or no.
And I mentioned this at the previous meeting. We have HOAs that are sometimes forced to hire their own attorneys because of certain residents or applicants that will disregard the CCNRs and say, well, I have city approval. I will go ahead with it. So that puts HOAs in a very difficult position to enforce their own CCNRs and having to hire someone and considering that they operate with a very, very small budget. I believe that it just puts further restrictions on what they can actually do.
Yeah, I would also, I would sort of restate that I don't necessarily disagree that that would be a burden on the association, but that would also set a precedent for many other things that happen within the city that would really have the same impact on association, whether it be building permits, individual building permits, entitlements. You know, the same argument could be made in all those cases. And this would definitely set a precedent in that area, which would possibly give them the same argument for those also.
I wanted to jump in here. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, members of the public, I wanted to echo what Mr. Ware is saying. I too have a concern of starting a precedent. There are many HOAs that have more severe restrictions than the city does. Mr. Ware mentioned some of them. Another big one is parking, and we've always taken the position that it's the HOAs' rules, it's private rules, and it's up to them to enforce them. And I, it is somewhat problematic for myself, whether it be in this situation or the parking situation or another one, that we become the enforcer of a private property rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Pone.
Thank you for the clarification. In reference to the number of vehicles parked on any given street, it says, does that, and I'm trying to find it in the staff report, does the term vehicle or car, does it include any of the semis that will potentially be parked on streets that carry all of the equipment?
Basically, the reference to vehicles parked on the street is in reference to what the city would define as staging for the purposes of the film permit ordinance. The question was, for a semi where they're carrying equipment and things such as that, we would look at that as part of the staging activity on its own. What, the reason that we had added in the vehicle parking was, we were trying to find a limit where even simple vehicle parking may cause some type of impact on the street because it would sort of go outside the parameter of where the filming may be taking or occurring. But in the case of trucks carrying equipment, other types of equipment trucks, generators and such that, that would be included in staging. And for your example previously, or for your situation previously, if that was occurring on a private road within an association, we would require the association to sign off as property owner on that particular type of instance. So, yes, an equipment truck would be considered staging.
Okay, then my last question is, we discussed at the last meeting that an immediate neighbor, next-door neighbor, may or may not have veto power. We mentioned 90% approval or acceptance within a 200-foot radius, and I believe that was due to some of the situations in neighborhoods where one does not like the other and would have, as I said, veto power over that. Is there something, and I believe that the next-door neighbor should be able to have veto power. I'm wondering whether it's going to be very difficult to legislate that, but when there are known problems within a neighborhood between neighbors or among neighbors, can we make exceptions there? Is there a clause that could be implemented that if there's a known neighborhood dispute, and I'm just throwing it out there, that perhaps?
Well, in brief, whether there'd be a neighborhood dispute may not be readily knowledgeable to the people here at the city, and things go on all the time within neighborhoods that we would not necessarily know of and/or would be able to really confirm one way or the other during a process. And I'm not sure we would want to base any type of approval on a relationship between neighbors. I think we have to have a more objective standard. It was the motion of council during the last meeting that sort of presented the percentages and the area that we presented tonight, specifically that there wasn't an issue where we would have a neighbor, even an adjacent neighbor, have that sort of veto power. But, you know, of course, we'll, as the council approves it, we'll change it. But that was not the motion last time, and I wouldn't really want to get into the position where we were trying to guess what neighbors were feeling with each other.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Mr. Gillette.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ware, in reading this and looking at the ordinance, I'm trying to understand, do we in any way differentiate between duration of filming? In other words, do we look at one classification, for some organization that's going to come in, do their filming in one day and be gone, or someone that's going to come in, as has happened in the community a number of times over the years, and do a feature film and be here for several weeks?
I would say, in the previous draft of this ordinance that came to council on June, there actually was a breakdown between filming, I believe it was, filming of less than, less than seven days, or seven days or fewer, had one written consent standard, and that more than seven days had a different written consent standard. So this, the current proposal does not differentiate between that. That was, when the council made their motion, they had us remove that. But, so right now, this ordinance doesn't take into consideration whether the filming is one day or multiple days, whether it be, you know, one week, two weeks, three weeks.
Okay, and that condition was removed by council action?
That was in the motion of the last council meeting, yes. The motion was to raise the percentage of written consent from 80 to 90, and also drop the consent area from 300 to 200, but they didn't want, in that particular situation, it was 100% written consent if it was over seven days. But the council motion was specific that they did not want a condition where one person could cause a veto to the entire filming.
Okay, I understand that, but I, apparently I misunderstood, or however that happened, that I see a very significant difference in a crew coming in one day, there's only so much disruption that can be created in one day versus, and we've had that, where an entire town has been built to do a feature, or some of the older features that were done where they're here for two weeks, commercials that are filmed in one day. There is a significant difference in the impact in the community, and I think that our permit process should differentiate between those two, because the lesser potential impact time, one day, two days, I think it would be a lot easier, and we could encourage that much more so than the long duration shoots that occur. And I know when this ordinance was, the current ordinance was originally established-
Dr. Gillette, put a question on the app, would you?
Thank you.
Further questions of staff? None. Dr. Gillette, you can certainly ask any question you want to, if you'd like.
Nick Echbal Kidway, not a doctor. Good evening, Dr. Gillette, and Glancy. Dr. Gillette, who's having a conversation. I guess staff and council succeeds a lot of time because you just tire the people out. I watched the hearing on this two weeks ago. It came on about 10 o'clock, and lo and behold, some people had still been there. There were some people from the industry, and I don't think they have shown up again. It's not that easy to come and attend these meetings and have to listen to all the stuff that goes on. The original ordinance is yet another example of the slow and sure destruction of United States and more specifically, Thousand Oaks. It's unbelievable that some people get elected and they just think that they represent residents as if residents are in some kind of island by themselves and have so much power, but the next-door residents or people who are trying to make a living have to be just subservient to these other people who have veto power. I'm glad that you sent this back to staff, but I'm not so sure that the ordinance has really been finessed to the right point. The ideal situation, in my humble opinion, would be to come up with something where it gives the maximum freedom to those people who are trying to earn a living and provide for their families versus some people that abuse the ordinance and become a nuisance. And everybody should not be, should not be put in, through that wringer. And too many of these ordinances, especially the one in the past, have created this position where, where it just becomes too much work, too much red tape. I had faxed about a week ago, letter, a story from the LA Times, and lo and behold, it did make it into your second green packet, but not the first one. I don't understand, I mean, how this city works. I mean, this green packet has been politicized forever. Now, because of identity theft or something like that, none of the citizens' things can be put on the internet. You have to come to the city hall or go to the library to see the green packet, which I had to do, because on important issues, in fact, what is the most important thing? I mean, empty chamber over here. Input from the citizens is what makes a democratic process, what makes this, I believe, a public hearing. But what is a public hearing when there's no public? And what is a public? Public is the American taxpayer who is just being shafted left and right, as we can see from what has happened in Sacramento last night. One of the things that has not been issued, even addressed up until this point, and it's the elephant in the room on this ordinance, is that the pawn headquarters of the world is in the San Fernando Valley. And how will you address when pawn is being shot in these homes? Well, the city attorney will say, well, this is a First Amendment issue, and I agree. But what they do inside the house is fine, but we know we have scenic vistas over here. When they want to shoot out in the backyards, there is a privacy issue. I don't think that has been addressed at all. I think some people think that, well, we are born with no clothes, so these are natural acts, and if they do it next door and they do it at 2:00 in the morning, that's fine. But I don't think that's what your ordinance should allow. And there should be provisions where the privacy and the concern of the neighbors in that aspect is taken into account. Once again, it's unbelievable how in government, jobs are not addressed. I mean, I don't look like an actor, I don't look like a state hand, but I have made my living indirectly many times from the sets and the different companies that are in the valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. No other public comment to this? Staff, redirect? Okay, any questions of staff? None, let's close the public hearing now. Conversation and discussion, Dr. Gillette, you want to continue? No, there are no cards. We're hearing closed. Mr. Fox?
Sure, I'll just start it, maybe for discussion. I think staff's done a good job based on the information that was provided by council at the last hearing. You know, there's no, I don't think there's a perfect scenario for this particular issue, so I'll just share my own perspective. I think one of the things that we need to do is make sure that a neighborhood is not destroyed or really disrupted because of an activity occurring in the neighborhood. On the other hand, I think to some level, we need to protect private property rights. And if somebody owns a home and wants to use it for filming, then they should have the right to do that with certain parameters. I think the balance that we've struck here is reducing the radius, meaning we're not going to go out and ask somebody that lives four blocks away, which in some cases would have been the previous process with a 500-foot radius. So we've shrunk that radius to the people that are really affected, and we increased the percentage of people that have to sign the petitions. The one sticking point is whether somebody should have to have 100% signatures based on the length of the filming. From my perspective, I think whenever you give veto power to anyone, that disrupts the fairness doctrine. And if you think about it, if something is going to occur for more than a day or two, the likelihood of getting a 90% signature rate is probably not very good. So it isn't going to be just one neighbor that is causing the problem. I can't imagine that only one neighbor would have a problem with filming over a week, for example. And with that provision, I think the likelihood of somebody coming in and doing extended filming and only having one person object is very, very unlikely. Very unlikely. So I think this ordinance addresses that nicely. On the other hand, a company comes in and they are going to film for a day or maybe two for a commercial, this provides for the possibility that because of a neighbor dispute, somebody just simply is not going to sign, and it really has nothing to do with what's going on. There's just a dispute that has really nothing to do with the issue at hand. So I think we've struck a good balance here. I don't think there's a magic bullet for this one. I think we try it, and we have staff collect data and bring it back in a year and find out where we're at. The other issue is, and I think it's in the staff report, there's not a lot of these in the community, and so I don't know that this is going to be really a high-level issue. It's, we don't have a lot of film permits, and so it's a relatively minor issue to begin with. I'm not minimizing it for those neighborhoods, but this is not a common occurrence for Thousand Oaks. And for those of you that may be thinking that this is somehow a revenue-generating process, it's not. You know, the city operates on, you know, several hundred million dollar budget, and the fees that we would get from these permits are really miniscule compared to what we're looking at. So it's not a revenue-generating issue at all. It's more an issue of neighborhood quality of life and property rights. That's from my perspective, anyway. So those are my thoughts. I'm not going to make a motion until I think the rest of the councils weigh in, because certainly you could have a different, many different perspectives on this one.
Comments to the motion? Further comments? Dr. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I still would like to see two things. One, I'd like to see some sort of differential in the amount of time that a company's going to be here. I think there's a whole different environment for the company that comes in for a one-day shoot and the company that comes in for a longer shoot. And if I remember correctly, part of the genesis of this ordinance was some extensive damage that was done over a period of time- that was done over a period of time. Parquet de la paz, film company generator trucks, turf damage, sprinkler, and there were some other infrastructure. That was all public property. And I've often thought that that could be minimized by requiring certain type of accessible bonding by the companies, which would be a procedural thing. And then if you're coming in for one day, it would be less. If you're coming in for seven days, something like that that provides some flexibility. I don't think one neighbor should have the right, one neighbor, to stop the whole thing. But I think, I agree with Mr. Fox, that I can't imagine for an extended shoot that there's only going to be one person object to it or one person that has an opinion on it. Thank you.
Further comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Fox.
If I could, I'll just interject. If it goes this way, I would have no problem putting into the motion some level of bonding to address Mr. Gillette's concerns if there's no issue with the city attorney. And I'd leave it to staff, but we could include that. Well, it would be different levels, I think, with Mr. Gillette's getting at it. A certain level of bonding if you're, say, less than three days, and higher if you're going to be more than three days, something along those lines.
That, and going down that road, that's not a simple task, because somebody has to sit in judgment of, was there damage? Were they in violation of the conditions? There has to be a process to administratively administer that. But if this is important enough, it's probably worth the time to do it.
Ms. Albano?
We can have some discussion on that.
Ms. Fox, hang on one. Ms. Albano?
I was just going to say, that's fine. If you want us to include something like that, we can. But we can either bring back the ordinance again, or you can adopt this ordinance, and then we bring back an amendment. Because this is a second reading, so if we change it, we'd have to reintroduce. So I would suggest that if it's the council's will at the end of your discussions, that you adopt this one, and we can bring back an amendment to it in September. But the other thing I want to caution about, bonding, we can provide that filmmakers, if they have to post a bond. The problem is, is who's going to be responsible for dealing with the bonding company? And it's in here? Go ahead. Why don't you say it? Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I'm getting looks from them that I wanted to talk about.
Come on, Laurie.
In the draft ordinance right now, there is subsection H.4-8.04, gives the film liaison, which is right now the co-compliance manager. We can impose conditions that include insurance requirements, performance, bonds, indemnity, and whole harmless agreements. That's already in there right now.
Okay. Ms. Fox, you had a follow-up comment or not? Dr. Schlecht?
That's fine. And so that addresses that. I still, I don't have any problem with amending this to move us forward or moving this to move it forward, but I would like to see something to differentiate between the short time, the one to two days, and the longer duration thing. Because I think they're very different environments, and I don't know that this one thing catches all of it.
Okay. Ms. Bill, your opinion?
Thank you. I do agree that one neighbor should not be holding up an entire shoot. The difference, however, is I was mentioning the immediate next-door neighbor versus a neighbor that is 200 feet away from the actual shooting location, because the immediate next-door neighbor does feel the impact of that particular shoot. And I remember last year, there were helicopters filming in Newberry Park, and there were a few complaints about that because the helicopter was flying overhead late at night. So I do agree that there has to be some difference or differentiation between a seven-day-or-more shoot, a longer shoot, versus a one, two, or three-day shoot. In terms of the performance bonds, I don't know. The standard is $1 million. I don't know how difficult it will be for the filmmakers and the crew to obtain bonds at different levels. That is a whole different issue, maybe actually more difficult to achieve than originally I actually would be okay with 100% approval if a shoot is longer than seven days. That if it goes in that direction, whatever motion is made, I would be in support of that. Other than that, I'm perfectly okay with approving the ordinance as is tonight and with other amendments to follow in the future.
Now, if that wasn't a motion, is there a motion for, oh, Ms. Albano, I'm sorry. You had a comment?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I needed to correct something. I was definitely confused on this one. This is the first reading, so if we do make changes that we can specify tonight, we can include them, and it would be the first reading, and then when we come back in September. So I was, I really did misspeak and want to correct the record. So if there was something specific that you wanted to add, we could do it tonight, as long as there's enough specificity, since it would be the first reading. So sorry about that mistake on my part.
Thank you, Ms. Albano. Dr. Gillette? You don't want to inject your idea into a proposed motion?
Well, I just assume, thank you, Mr. Mayor, but I just assume, waiting here if there's any additional comment to this.
Okay. Any additional comments based on Ms. Albano's statement? Mr. Fox, you have a motion to make?
I'm going to move the staff recommendation. And I recognize the, like I said, there's different perspectives on this one. My own view is that I don't think veto power, in most cases, is a good thing, is a good policy. And then with respect to the length of time, I'm just unclear what council may be looking at and what difference there would be. For example, a shoot that was going to be over seven days, okay, you still need 90% concurrence. But I'm not quite sure what council would look forward to amendment. So my motion's to adopt the resolution, and if we need to bring it back, well, as Ms. Albano says, the first reading, I'm open to suggestions. I'm not quite sure what that would be. For my purposes, I don't really have anything to add, but I would be open to amendment if somebody has further language.
Okay, Dr. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I ask staff a question without re, okay. Do we have a sense of, in a one-year time, in a one-year period, what is the duration of the majority of the requests for a permit? How many days?
I would say to a large extent, I think we generally have. It's been pretty consistent over the last two, three years, about 30 permits roughly a year. And I would say to a large majority, most of them are probably three days and less. There are a few exceptions, but I would say the majority of them are pretty small. The only exception is there's some trends with the reality-type shows that tend sometimes to be a few days longer than that, and that's a trend that still started growing with time. But generally, a lot of the shoots are less than that.
Okay. And I was saying specifically, the last time that they shot a Saturn commercial out at Cal Lutheran, it was there for three weeks. They actually built a showroom, so that would probably be the other end. So, okay, if I could, with the motion, to ask staff to do an analysis, a numerical analysis, on actual practice, the numbers of applications that we get, and if three days is the, three days seems to be the magic number, the highest percentage, that we take a look at setting up some sort of ease to move the three-day process and a more stringent requirement for the more than three days, maybe three, whatever that breakdown is, where the majority of the requests for permits fall. Does that, Mr. Fox, did that make sense? Did that?
Right. Further comment? No further comment? Absolutely, Ms. Albano?
I just wanted to get clarification. We're going to bring back a report that tells you that, but do you want us to come up with some ideas about what would be more stringent and what would be easier? Okay, does council have any sense of what they might be considering?
So that those two circumstances are handled differently.
And do you mean by that differently, that possibly a difference in how many people you need to agree, a bigger area, or do you want to just leave it up to us and we'll come back with whatever we think?
Hang on one. Dr. Schlecht, my take on what you said implied more a financial differentiation, was that my misunderstanding, or was that your intent?
Well, that is the intent, because it's, I want to try and be as helpful to the industry as we possibly can for the majority of their business in the community. And I don't see, for a one-to-three-day shoot, I don't see life being disrupted irreparably. And so I think that there's a different way to handle that small, the most common, most frequent. And I think where we get into a need is for the longer duration, and that's why I think staff has to look at the numbers. If we've got 80% of the applications we get are for one to three days, then I think we can handle that differently than we do above that.
Good. Thanks for clarification. Ms. Irwin, you have a comment?
Yeah, I mean, I would say if we are going to differentiate, that you do something like written consent from 80% for less than three days or seven days, and maybe after it's seven days, 100%. I mean, you're looking, I guess, to come back with something, and if we're looking at differentiating, that would be one of the suggestions, just to differ in the percentage.
Okay. Ms. Bill?
Yes, if a shoot lasts for more than five days or seven days, I wouldn't want to reduce the percentage of required signatures. If a shoot will last longer than a week, then I think we should increase that, and perhaps we should consider 100%, but within the same radius of 200 feet.
Thank you. Dr. Schlecht?
And that recommendation, I think, can come back from staff, once they take a look at the empirical data that tells us over X amount of time, how many of these things are for how long. And then we're addressing actual times and real-time scenarios.
Thank you. My comments, I like the idea for the increased dollar amount for whatever the break number of days is. I think that's very reasonable, and I think it's a good approach. I don't like the idea of mandating 100% approval or okay on it, really under any circumstance, but that's my personal opinion. Make her the motion? Okay, please vote.
The motion carries 5-0, and the ordinance title is an ordinance amending sections 4-8.02 through 4-8.05 of Chapter 8, Title 4, and Section 5-11.01b of Chapter 11 of Title 5 of the Code Regarding Regulations for Film Permits.
Thank you very much. 8B has been continued to another meeting date, so we are at Department Reports 9A. Mr. Spurgeon? Well, I'll give him a couple of seconds to change seats here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is regarding school crossing guards for three elementary schools where changes are going to be occurring this fall. And in addition to myself and Public Works Director Mark Watkins at the dais, is Roy Myers, who manages our crossing guard program for the city. By way of background, our crossing guard program started about 30 years ago. We have 31 crossing guards throughout the city, serving 25 schools, with a budget about quarter million dollars from the general fund. It's about $8,000 per crossing guard location is what it takes from a funding perspective. And we have about double the number of crossing guards in the city of Thousand Oaks as compared to the average in the county. And this graphic shows the 31 locations for crossing guards, and the locations in blue and red are the subject of this item. In order to maximize our resources for crossing guards, we have adopted standards, the city council adopted these standards, again, 30 years ago. And really of note here is that we count both vehicles and pedestrians at an intersection to determine if a cross, excuse me, if a crossing guard is warranted. And the city adopted less stringent standards by half for pedestrians than the state standards. And the way we count vehicles at an intersection is those that conflict with pedestrian movement. And so those that are going in both directions through the intersection, in this case, the major street is at a stoplight, none of those vehicles are counted as conflicting. The ones that are counted are those that would be making a left turn through a crosswalk or a right turn, as shown in these depictions here. Of course, the pedestrians are crossing at that location. So those are the actual vehicles that we count as conflicting. The Canal Valley Unified School District voted to close two schools this coming fall, Meadows and University Elementary Schools. At the same time, a new charter school was approved by the county school board, and that is the Meadows Arts and Technology Elementary School, or MATES. That school will be located at the old Meadows University site. An additional change is at Manzanita Elementary, where a new magnet school will start this fall, and that is the Environmental Academy for Research, Technology, and Earth Science, or EARTHs. And so in addition to the closing of University Elementary School, several crossing guard locations are affected. Now, this graphic just shows where these schools are located throughout the city. I'll start with Meadows Elementary School. The existing Meadows students that are going to stay in the district are reassigned to two different schools, Westlake Hills and Ladera. The enrollment at the new charter school, MATES, will actually be greater than the existing Meadows Elementary School by about 60 students, going from 231 to 290. But we expect fewer students will be walking to this elementary school, and many more will be driven in, because as a charter school, they can draw students from throughout the city. And this is a graphic from the school district. Really, the central area was the Meadows school boundary. Basically, the north half will go to Ladera, the south half will go to Westlake Hills. And those two schools, the reassigned schools, are about two and a half, three miles away from this area. So again, we expect very few, if any, students would be walking to those schools. The two sites where existing crossing guards are located, one is shown here in this photo. This is Herbs at La Granada. The second crossing guard is located just outside Meadows, which is to the left in this picture. This is on La Granada near Wilder Road. We did some counts of existing pedestrian volumes at most of these locations, so that we could get an understanding of where, what our recommendations might be. So the pedestrian volumes at La Granada and Wilder are actually significant. Those at Herbs and La Granada are few, and we actually expect less pedestrians at that location. So our recommendations regarding Meadows is to maintain the crossing guard at the school site on La Granada near Wilder, as there will be actually probably more pedestrians there. And our recommendation is to discontinue the crossing guard at Herbs and La Granada. Currently, there aren't enough pedestrians to actually meet our standards, and we expect fewer there. For university, these students are reassigned to Weathersfield and Wildwood. School district plans a preschool program there, which wouldn't require crossing guards, of course. And existing students And existing students walking to University actually exceed our standards quite significantly, so we would expect those students to continue walking to their new schools. Basically, this graphic shows in red the existing university area and pretty much split down the middle, a half on the west side will go to Wildwood Elementary School and the east side will go to Weathersfield. A couple of existing crossing guard locations for University, both of these would, of course, be discontinued as they're no longer needed. Students walking to Wildwood would need to cross Lynn Road at Arbolas, that's a signalized intersection. And students that would be walking to Weathersfield need to cross Moore Park Road. Initially, we thought that the best location for that would be at Camino dos Palos. And that's, in fact, what we told the district early on. But as we worked on the design for a smart crosswalk at that location, we realized that the site distance isn't really adequate due to curvature of the road. And so our revised recommendations are to have crossing guards at Moore Park and Arbolas and Moore Park and Olson, and those are both signalized intersections. Of course, road curvature and site distance are affected are important when you're approaching a cross crosswalk, as shown in this graphic here. Here's a photo looking northbound on Moore Park approaching Camino dos Palos, and you can see that you actually can't even see the intersection there. And likewise, southbound. And so again, this just illustrates the the need to not designate that as a crosswalk. So our recommendations regarding University, of course, discontinue the two existing crossing guards there, assign a new crossing guard to the intersection of Olson, Lynn, and Arbolas. This is for students going to Wildwood. Assign a new crossing guard at Moore Park and Arbolas and one at Moore Park and Olson, and these are for students going to Weathersfield. The last thing we need to cover is Manzanita. Again, at this school, there will be a new magnet school called EARTHs. The enrollment will be significantly higher for EARTHs than it was for existing Manzanita Elementary School. We expect many more vehicles and a lot more students crossing the the intersection right at the school itself, which is Michael and Redfield. Students would be coming here from throughout the district as this is a magnet school. Our recommendations for this school, assign a new crossing guard at Michael and Redfield. There is not one there currently. Maintain the existing crossing guard at Michael and Orchard. This is the location near the school at Redfield. This is where the crossing guard would be located. We did meet with the school district early on to talk about how we would reassign these crossing guards. District staff does concur with staff recommendations regarding this. We also met out at the Manzanita site with the district staff and the EARTHs, EARTH staff to talk about the traffic expected out there and the crossing guard recommendation there. We also met with the MATES board members. And Traffic Commission reviewed this item in June and supported staff recommendations. We will be following up all these locations after school starts, just to make sure that existing pedestrian and vehicle volumes do support ongoing assignment of crossing guards at those locations. So our recommendations are summarized here. I did go over those at each site, so I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon. Questions of staff? Ms. Irwin?
Is right now the plan to use University for childcare?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Dr. Schlett?
Mr. Spurgeon, I just, point of interest, when you have a controlled intersection and a crossing guard, does that work or do they get into conflicts? Or and that was one part, and the other part is with the implementation or the evolution of smart crosswalks, would those be used in conjunction with a signalized intersection or only in areas where you don't have that?
Let me take the second question. The smart crosswalks are for locations that currently do not have a signal.
Okay.
And I'm going to ask Mr. Myers to answer your first question about
Thank you.
crossing guards at signals.
Yes, good evening. Our crossing guards are taught, especially at locations where there are signals, to operate with the signal. They know to move out quickly, and once they're out in the middle, they then motion for the students to move across. Only the group that sets a signal are allowed to go across. Any of them that arrive after the the initial movement out, they're not allowed to to cross. They have to stay and wait for the next cycle. So we have quite a number of crossing guard locations at signals around the city, and they've all worked quite well with the two working in conjunction.
Additional questions? Then thank you, gentlemen. We have one speaker on this, Pete Peterson. Mr. Peterson, if you give us your your name and your city of residence, I sure appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Glancy, council members and staff. My name is Pete Peterson. I'm the Director of Planning and Facilities with the Canal Valley Unified School District. I'm also a resident of Thousand Oaks. And I'd like to, you know, start by thanking Mark Watkins, Jay Spurgeon, Roy Myers, Kathy Lowry from, you know, Public Works, and Diane McKay from the Traffic and Transportation Commission, and Sergeant Bob Fleming from the Police Department. They spend a lot of time with us. We have various meetings at school sites, in my office, town hall meetings they attended. And the district is very supportive of the recommendation that was approved by the Traffic Commission. And I just want to let you know that we are, you know, very, very supportive of that. And we understand that after the school starts, there will be monitoring and evaluation of whether they need to continue or any adjustments need to be made, but we will go along with that. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any questions? None? Thank you for being down here tonight. Appreciate it. Okay, conversation, motion? Dr. Schlett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the staff recommendation, point one, A through F, and point two for the appropriations.
Thank you. Comments to the motion? None? Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Nine B, Mr. Watkins?
Thank you, Mayor Glancy, members of city council. The next item before you is consideration of the council declaring a water supply shortage level one. Withman and the dais is Don Kendall. Don's the general manager for the Cigis Municipal Water District. And of course, Mr. Spurgeon. Just very briefly, the council adopted in April our new water conservation ordinance that took effect in in June. That new ordinance included a number of items that are permanent and mandatory. It's consistent with regional efforts taken on by other agencies in the area. And it's a BMP-based ordinance, which means it's best management practices. It's not rationing, it's not allocations, but it just dictates to our customers what type of actions they should take to conserve water. It does include three increasing stages of conservation, including limitations on irrigation, how often you can irrigate, how often per station, and then also the the permanent In in general, this is an education-based program. All these requirements require a great amount of outreach. We've been doing that with newspaper ads. We've done ads jointly with Cal-Am and Cal Water. We've done outreach to homeowners associations. We've worked closely with CRPD, the Canal Valley Unified School District. We're doing outreach to landscapers, the people that actually are setting the timing on folks' irrigation controllers. We've talked to the Chamber of Commerce. It's been on city website. We've done public service announcements on and on, so you kind of get the idea. Like it's, like I said, a lot of outreach and a lot of it's in the in the faith of our local residents to do the right thing, once we give them the opportunity and let them know what our situation is in regards to water and and our need to use it wisely. So with that, I'm going to let Mr. Kendall go through a bit about what's going on from the state perspective and water, and then we'll close up with a recommendation for city council.
Mr. Chairman, Mark, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. I don't need to tell all of you that we're in the midst of a protracted drought. As you know, we're all part of the Metropolitan Water District service area. State Water Project supplies really represent a 100% of the water that the city receives. We get no Colorado River water, although the Colorado River water supplies have been relatively better than state project. That's used in other parts of Southern California, which fortunately has freed up supplies for us. Local supplies make up a large portion of the water that's used in Southern California. Of course, City of Thousand Oaks with their Hill Canyon project has been probably one of the best projects that we've been involved with for some time. However, Metropolitan is faced with wholesale water rate increases. As you know, Cigis is representative on the Metropolitan Board, voted against that. We understand that water is expensive. We understand the need for water transfers. And most of the money is going up to Sacramento to pay for the operation of the state water project, which is a take-or-pay contract. Even with all the local water that we have developed, Cigis has stored water in Las Poses Basin, and for the better part of a year has been pulling water from the basin to help meet the the demands and help stretch out the supplies as far as we can. We're still faced with some sense of a shortage in water allocation that we're going to be talking about. Next slide, please. You'll notice on the state project that we're roughly 92% of average, which is not bad. However, next slide, because it's been a multi-year drought, you can see the storage has been relatively low. In fact, Lake Oroville, one of our primary reservoirs, has been substantially low. And next slide, there's another shot of Lake Oroville. If you look at the next slide, you'll see where we are presently. Lake Oroville, which is sort of on the top center to the right there, is about 52% of capacity or 65% of average, still below where we'd like it to be. And its storage is really the name of the game when you're trying to deal with water supply in Southern California. In Ventura County, we have water in Lake Bard, 10,000 acre feet of water. One acre foot's about 326,000 gallons of water. And almost 100,000 acre feet in the Las Poses Basin. Next slide, all coming from the Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta, which you see there. I would tell you, we wouldn't be here today talking about a drought with all the things because of all the projects that we have all developed if it were not for the federal decision. Next slide, please. Dealing with the Delta smelt. The way that decision came down was that because there was a decline in Delta smelt, whether that's natural or otherwise, remains to be determined, the pumpers were blamed. And so we could no longer pump water when we needed to pump water. As a matter of fact, where we are today is we're pumping water during the summer months is when you was when you need the water to go into people's homes. And so now we're competing, trying to put that water into storage versus serving that water. But that's the that's the dilemma we're in right now, and I'll be glad to report in the future to the council on actions we're taking to try and mitigate that.
And and so with that, Metropolitan Water District has provided allocations to its various member agencies. And so they gave an allocation to Cigis, and Cigis in turn has given an allocation to the city. So the allocation we received for this next water year, which is July, starting July 1st, is an 85% allocation. And what that means is that we are obligated to cut back by 15%. Failure to do so includes the potential for some pretty fairly substantial monetary penalties. We think there are some ways to offset these penalties using some of the credits that we have in the Las Poses Basin and working with Cigis and some of the other purveyors. And so we have not anticipated paying these penalties. And when we talk about water rates as part of the next item, I'll explain that those have not been included into our rates. Nonetheless, that that potential is out there, and our obligation to cut back 15% is out there. And so with that, staff is recommending that city council adopt level one conservation measures. What this does, in addition to all of the measures that are already in place, is limits irrigation to a maximum of three days per week during summertime and a maximum of two days a week during the winter. And it also further requires that people fix leaks and broken sprinkler heads within 72 hours. Obviously, there'll be a bit of outreach continuing with this, including direct mail items to all of our customers. And so that is staff's recommendation. We're more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, gentlemen. Questions of staff? Ms. Bill, do you have anything?
Thank you. Thank you very much for this very thorough presentation. I'm wondering about the enforcement. This is complaint-driven. How, I don't think that a neighbor, unless you really hate your neighbor, is going to turn anyone in. How how is anyone going to keep track of how many days a residence is watering its lawn? And the same with with businesses?
We've referred to this at times as complaint-driven. We really think of it as being education-driven. And so we established the water hotline as an example. That was one of council's recommendations when we passed the ordinance back in April. And we've got a number of phone calls on the hotline, and we really use that as an education tool because we let those people know what the requirements are. And then anybody that has been, you know, turned in, per se, we use that as an educational tool. We hang the door hanger, we talk to people. And it's really a program that's based on the premise that people will do the right thing once they know what it is that's expected of them. And that's what's been successful with a lot of our recycling efforts and a lot of the other efforts that are out there. And so we do have the water hotline. People do call in. Sometimes they're turning in neighbors, sometimes they're just turning in what they see. So if they see water on during the day, we'll get a call. That's an opportunity for us to go out and educate somebody on what the requirements of the ordinance are. City of Simi Valley did pass their ordinance last night, and they chose to pass theirs with mandatory watering on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And so that does make the enforcement a whole lot easier. That also brings up other operational challenges because now, when you're doing that, it changes the way you operate your water system. Because our water system is really designed to be operated seven days a week. And so our storage capacities on our tanks, our pumping programs and our those are designed for continuous usage. If you concentrate all that usage into three days, approximately 70% of summertime watering for residents is outdoors, and 90% of our customers are residential. And so all of a sudden, you're going to be concentrating all of that irrigation into a very few short hours, has a couple of impacts. One of those, not only are you draining your tanks, but then normally we're pumping our tanks during the nighttime, we'll be pumping during the daytime. And we usually avoid that because that's when peak Edison costs are. So a lot of the operational changes come along with that. And so, yeah, it'd be a lot easier to be able to just drive by and say, no question, it's Tuesday, you shouldn't be irrigating. So it will require more effort on our part by saying, we really look at it as an education piece, and that's where we're pushing all of our efforts, is on that education end.
Is there a certain amount of hours or a set schedule as to where, at what time you can water, at what time you should not water? I didn't see that in the staff report.
Yeah, nothing changes with the level one, except for the maximum three days per week. So the current ordinance that the city has adopted and is in effect now limits watering to between 5:00 PM and 9:00 AM. So no watering during the peak of the day. That stays the same. Now, the only the only step the city council is taking by adopting a level one, which is a moderate shortage, is you are limited to three days per week, and you're obligated to fix breaks within 72 hours.
Now, I know of at least one business in Thousand Oaks which uses artificial grass or astroturf. Do we know of any residences which use that artificial grass? And our ordinance, if correct me if I'm wrong, does not allow for that?
Yeah, there's a few residences in town that we're aware of that have put in artificial grass, both in the front yards and the parkways. I'm not sure what our ordinance, how that relates to what is or isn't allowed on the front yard of a residence.
Maybe Mr. Prescott would be able to answer that if he's still here, but with a city attorney. But obviously, more people will probably be inclined to install artificial grass now with the water situation worsening. So I'm just wondering whether our ordinance provides for that, and if not, maybe it's time to make changes to it. Thank you.
Ms. Irwin?
Thank you, Mr. Glancy. Is that a Delta smelt on your shirt?
That is indeed a Delta smelt on my shirt.
I thought so.
Yeah.
In the staff report, it says if no reduction is achieved, there's a penalty of $6 million. And then in the presentation, you just said $4 million.
Yeah, I should I should point out, in the staff report, we the initial allocation we received did include the $6 million penalty. That was a calculation error from the agency that sent that to us. It's actually about $4 million would be. And they were just showing examples. If, for example, we didn't cut back at all, that's what it would be.
Okay, and then if if you didn't have these credits, let's say it went on another year and you're not achieving those reductions, is would that would those penalties be spread among all TO residents or just out just Thousand Oaks water? And then Cal-Am is basically dealing with the same type of And then Cal-Am is basically dealing with the same type of penalty?
It would, those penalties would then have to be included within our water rates in some fashion or another. And so they would be spread across just those people to whom we serve water. And then Cal-Am and Cal-Water would have to do the same. It wouldn't, it would be within our water funds. It wouldn't be within the entire city, just our water service area.
Okay, so let's say it's a $4 million penalty. How much are residents, if you didn't have the credits, how much are residents looking at adding to their bills?
Yeah, I don't have that broken down. Initially, when we were, on the next item we're going to talk about, which is the water and wastewater financial plans. Initially, in those financial plans, we did build in some penalty amounts. And we built in, I think, about $1.5 million, and that equated to about a 12% increase. So just to use those numbers, only because those are the ones that I recall when we were doing some calculations. So for the $4 million, it would be, you know, another, about a third increase in your water rates. Very substantial.
Well, I think it's really important to use that in your educational materials, that, you know, everybody has to do their part of it. And then the other thing I was thinking about is if it is easier for enforcement to do, let's say, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, it would be very easy. I mean, obviously, you don't want to do Monday, Wednesday, Friday. It would be very easy to cut your area in half and say, north of, you know, Hillcrest or south of Hillcrest, that, you know, it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. If that makes enforcement easier, and if it makes it more likely that people will comply, and more likely that you can find people that are not watering on the days they're supposed to, that, wouldn't that work with your pumping schedule and your water planning?
And we could potentially do odd-numbered and even-numbered addresses and things, so that it was divided up more equally amongst the city also. If you just do it north and south, you're still working within certain water zones. So a water tank with a pump station would all pretty much be irrigating at the same time, because our water system really operates like a number of smaller systems with the tanks and pumping. So some of those operational things will still be there. We talked about potentially doing the even and the odds, so you could do Monday, Wednesday, Friday on one, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday on another, something along those lines. You know, the people we're going after, really the ones that are either watering every day, and again, if we get that notice and we'll go out, we meet with them, we talk to them, explain what it is. And if we have to go out for a few days to determine that that's what's going on, then we'll do that. If it's not successful, then we will come back to council and ask that that be changed, so that it is something that we can enforce more readily.
Well, I think that you would get much better compliance, and it's educational also, if you were sending something out and, you know, because, I'll tell you, I don't think any of my neighbors know about that, the three days a week. So education is really important. But if you're saying you're going to come back with something like that if you're not getting reduction.
If it's not successful. What will happen, and again, this item is somewhat related to the next item, which is water wastewater rates, is with Prop 218 notices that will go out for water rates, there will be an insert in there declaring the Level 1 and advising people. So there will be a direct mailer piece that goes out tomorrow to every customer of the city, advising them of what the new requirements are, in addition to other things we're doing.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Watkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things. The first one, the question is, there's a certain amount of water that flows into the delta regardless, from the mountain runoff and what have you. With that water not being pumped into the system now because of the federal decision on smelt, what's happening to that water?
Well, water's basically going out to the ocean.
Okay. So it's, instead of being utilized, okay. The other thing, Mr. Watkins, do we provide a service if a homeowner bought a home and has an automatic sprinkler system in it, what have you, and they're not sure how it works, and they, the clock is intimidating and what have you? Can they, like other utilities, call the city and have somebody go out and check the system for them and make sure that it's working? Do we?
We're in the process of starting up a program we're calling Water Audits. So if somebody calls and says, wow, how do I reduce? And I don't know how to do my sprinkler, then we would be able to send a city staff member to their house to help them program their controller, but also do a quick audit of the home. So look at the toilets, the dishwashers, and tell them, you know, here's what you've got, here's ways you can save money, here's what your showerheads are, and really just walk through the whole house and advise them where their water use is and in what areas they have for conservation.
When do you anticipate that being operational?
Probably within a month or so. What we're doing is, you know, retraining some existing city employees, and so we're developing that program. It's not something we've had.
I know, no one's anxious to look for more work for your folks, and especially when you're cutting back in staffing areas all over. But that's one where I know if you have a question about a gas leak, the gas company responds and does that kind of an audit, and Edison does it, and it just seemed that it made sense that we should do that, especially now where you've got a lot of people that may have a system, and they're just, they're afraid of it or unfamiliar with it, and we can help to make sure that if they do have one, or whatever they've got, that it's working as well as it possibly can.
That's some of the outreach we're doing to the landscape contractors that are out there too, because with a lot of people, what we've found is that their landscapers are the ones that's actually programmed their controller. And so we're working through the HOAs and through the landscapers, because those people, I think, have a lot of influence on how those are set too.
Okay, thank you.
For the questions, Ms. Bill Delapena?
This outreach program, is that only for customers, city customers, not any of the other Cal-Am or any of the other water purveyors in the city?
No, it's been both. We've actually worked very cooperatively with both Cal-Am and Cal-Water. So we've done display ads in the local newspaper, and they've had all three of our logos on it. So we've been sharing the cost for those and doing them jointly. Certainly, the city's website, everybody in the city sees that. We've been doing scrolls and PSAs on Channel 10. Everybody sees that.
Excuse me, let me clarify. I mean, for a city staff member to go out to someone's home, would it, will that person have to be a city customer rather than a Cal-Am or Cal-Water customer?
Yes, that would be within the city's water service area, because that program would be funded through our water rates, yes.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Okay, Dr. Kendall, I've got a question for you. I've heard that there was a study done concerning the delta smelt after a year of restricted flow. And what I had heard was that the number of smelt had not increased at all with this restriction. Is there veracity in that, or can you shed some light?
Yes, I can. That gets to the crux of our argument, which it isn't from the pumping. There are other discharges into the delta which we think are much larger stressors, but it seemed a convenient thing to do, unfortunately, and I think there lends a lot of credence to further work, which we are presently litigating that issue. So you're absolutely right about that.
Thank you very much. Assuming that litigation fails, how long would you expect this restricted flow to last?
A little bit hard to answer. If conditions persist this way at the federal level, I think you're still looking at another year at least to try and forge some type of agreement with how the biological opinion's going to be administered. But we're looking, we're actually attacking this problem from several fronts. So hopefully, a year for now, we won't be stuck with that particular issue, but it could be another year.
Okay, and speaking of biologic opinions, has one come down yet concerning the salmon?
It has, and we're trying to get that integrated into the delta smelt decision as well. Because the last thing you want to do, of course, and I'm sure this is what your point is, you can't manage these independently. You've got to manage the delta as a whole. And I think our point has been and continues to be, it is not because of the pumping.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. No further questions? Okay, we'll go to speakers, and we have three. Doug Yarney, followed by Nick Kidway, followed by Al Yanis. Varney, my apologies.
... on your water service company. And we're here in support of the resolution for Level 1. Like the City of Thousand Oaks, we too have been asked to have a 15% reduction in our production. And through the combined efforts, the joint efforts, as Mr. Watkins has explained, we've reached out with media, print, mailers, you know, everything we can do. This resolution is the next step in the process. And without achieving these goals and, you know, receiving these penalties, the bottom line is, the result is, is we're looking at rates. And that's the one thing that we want to avoid, is highering our rates. We need to keep that consistent. So the idea of having one voice within the city, bringing all the purveyors together, has been just fantastic, working with staff. And in order for that to happen, this resolution really needs to get passed. This in itself, right here, gives us all the same tool. It provides all the same voice. So when we're working with the community, we're working with the community at a whole and just not our customers. So we highly support it. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Yes, hang on just a second. Dr. Gillette?
Just a quick question, the same question that I asked Mr. Watkins. Excuse me. California Water Service, if someone has a need to have an audit on their home system, are you in a position to look at or provide that service, to send someone out to help with controls and to help someone familiarize themselves?
Yes, we currently will go out and meet with any of our customers to try and help them with any of their controllers. You'd mentioned water audits also. We're about a month, maybe two months out on that. That needs to get a little bit more well-defined. But those services are provided by us. We'll go out and help them with leak detection. We'll bring them, we've got water conservation material, you know, everything that we can provide for them, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you again. Ms. Kidway? Followed by Al Yanis.
Nick Egbalkidway, resident of Newbury Park, director of concern, City of Thousand Oaks. Honorable Mayor Glancy, I tried to read into the staff report, and I could not really find too much about this delta snout or whatever. I cannot even pronounce this thing. And once again, I mean, that's one of the reasons I'm here. I mean, more people, citizens, should be outraged. These so-called environmentalists, I mean, they are slowly, slowly destroying this whole country. They're destroying the state, and they're destroying the Thousand Oaks way of life. There is a price to pay for these kind of things. And all I read in your moratorium and all that is about the drought. That is a small secondary reason. And good stewards of resources that God has given us would not be wasting money anyway, wasting water and be using it properly. I also take strong exception to this tattling-on-your-neighbor concept. I mean, especially when, on the three-day thing. I mean, maybe turning the water on during the day may make some sense. I've said this once before, I think Mr. Fox listened to that comment about, it's been about 20 years. I was working on my car, and all of a sudden, a truck, a fire truck pulled up in front of my house. And I said, hi. And he said, well, hi, you know what you're doing? I said, yeah. He said, well, you are spilling antifreeze on the street. And I live on a hill, still live on a hill, even though it's not the same house. And my neighbor five houses down called 911 because he saw the green stuff going into the gutter. And so it cost actually more of the coolant to go, because even though they came in three or four minutes, it's just not, I mean, if he had just walked up and told me, I would have, it was a human mistake that I had not, this is called a babcock, I had not closed it. In fact, the Daily News does a great job of investigative reporting, and the DWP chairman, who is of Iranian descent, who was also on the Water Quality Control Board, and you folks might know that, when you got fined. It was on the front page a year ago or something like that, that his sprinklers were turned on for half an hour every day. And when the reporter pressed him, he said, oh, I need to talk to the landscaper. I don't do this, these kind of things. And it was a very big house and a lot of, so there's one set of standards for the average citizen and the, there's another standard. This reminds me of the Soviet Union, and so appropriately, since the time is short, your eagle even, it's, the wings are clipped. Please keep it like that. It's very appropriate for this chamber. Thank you.
As always, thank you very much. Oh, yeah. You actually want to make a comment? Oh, oh, yeah, thank you. Mr. Yanis? Oh, you need to hurry to keep me in line.
Okay. I'm Al Yanis with Cal-American Water, the operations manager. I'm here to support the city efforts. Like the city, Cal-American Water has received a mandatory 15% cutback, which leaves us with about 85%. The governor of the state and our local supplier and wholesaler have declared water shortage emergencies. The private water purveyors and the city have been working closely to provide consistent messages to all our customers. And it's been, you know, a joint effort with all three, with the three groups. The declaration of a Level 1 water shortage is an important step to help all of us achieve our required conservation efforts. We are, we are working with the Public Utilities Commission, our regulator, on implementing our conservation measures for all of our customers. And we are, and we continue to work with the city and others to promote a consistent Questions? Oh, to answer a question that the council had earlier about water, is there any, if Cal-American Water actually goes out to perform water audits? Yes, we do. We do perform water audits, and August 1st, we will have a consultant to come and assist us with that, because we have approximately 95 people that have requested water audits, including the HOAs. So we do have someone on board right now.
Thank you for that comment. Any questions of the speaker? None? Thank you, Mr. Yanis. Staff, any comments? Okay. Council discussion ended or motion? Dr. Gillette?
Thank you. I see Mr. Prescott is up on the desk now, on the staff table, and Mrs. Bill Delapena had a question before, and I think, I think I know the answer to it, but I think it's a good question. So it's about the requirements imposed on residential landscaping modifications versus commercial landscaping modifications for the use of artificial turf. And I... I didn't mean to speak for you, Ms. Bill Delapena. I was paraphrasing, so.
No, that is perfectly okay. I was just rudely interrupted by my colleague here. Mr. Prescott, yes, if you could please address that issue, I would very much appreciate it, because obviously, we do have a conflict here, and perhaps it can be reconciled.
The city does not have specific regulations that apply to the landscaping of individual single-family homes. We do have regulations that are imposed through the entitlement process on apartment projects and the common areas within condominium projects, the green belts and that sort of thing, do require landscape plans. But individual, single-family homes do not. So it would not be precluded for someone to use artificial turf at their home. We do have, however, in Title 1, Chapter 6 of the code, a requirement that single-family homes do have a landscape treatment fully installed in the front yard. Now, that could include hardscape, and it's not regulated as the type of material, but the important point is that it does have to be maintained. So if it's not maintained, then it becomes a public nuisance and a code compliance matter.
And how is that applied to businesses?
Businesses are subject to the, and commercial developments are subject to the architectural design guidelines, which do have a provision to avoid or minimize artificial elements. It's not a flat prohibition.
So in other words, there are no violation of our code currently by anyone then who has artificial turf, whether it's a business or a residence?
We do not have any code violations in process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, questions or any more comments? Okay, not hearing any comments, no conversation? I'll move, yes, Dr. Gillette, go ahead and make it. Thomas, the motion? Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Mr. Watkins, you're still up.
Thank you, Mayor Glancy. Members of the-
Members of the council. Joining me on the dais will be Tom Gaffney. Mr. Gaffney is with Bartle Wells Associates. Bartle Wells has been doing the wastewater master plan since we began the expansion a number of years ago and two years ago did the water master plan rate study for the first time. And so I'll introduce Mr. Gaffney to the council. The item before you is the consideration of the water system financial plan and the wastewater system financial plan. The process, very briefly, is that staff will be asking council to adopt those plans this evening and set the hearing for September 22nd, 2009. Once council approves that, then we will be mailing out notices to everyone within our water service area. And those notices advise them of the proposed increases, advise them of their opportunity to protest if they don't agree with those increases. And then in accordance with state law, we have to wait a minimum of 45 days after tonight's meeting before we can hold that public hearing. So that's why it will then be on September 22nd. The water system financial plan, as completed by Bartle Wells, includes a tiered rate structure as directed by council earlier this year. Includes rate adjustments that are required to pass through both the increased cost of wholesale water rates, operating expenses, capital, lift charges. We're also recommending changes to the connection fee in accordance with the E and R Instruction Cost Index. The rate-setting environment we went through with council fairly recently, I won't spend a lot of time there, other than to talk one more time about the water allocation and penalties. We did not build penalties into the rates. Initially, we ran through a couple of iterations doing that, and that would have dramatically increased the rates. And so our effort really is a very strong effort on conservation. And then we are working in complete cooperation with Cigus to make sure that we take advantage of whatever water credits are available to us to avoid any penalties. We're also dealing with lower water sales. And the impact this has is that basically we are selling a commodity and we've got certain fixed costs, and those fixed costs will be spread over a smaller number of units. And so, you know, very basic math without any increases shows that that also increases water rates. We are anticipating 90% water sales. So we are trying and aiming for a 15% cutback within the rates. We anticipate that we would be selling 90% of the water that we've sold in the past. The other item worthy of mention is operating reserves. We've mentioned this to council in the past, but our reserves have gotten fairly low. And what this does, it impacts our ability to absorb some of these rate increases. And so we don't have the reserves built up to kind of moderate these increases. And so we're in a position where we do have to raise the rates in order to keep our fund whole. I do want to mention also that the initial increase by the Metropolitan Water District was set to take place, or is taking place, on September 1st of this year. Metropolitan had a couple of different options before them. We had asked them to not make those increases until January because with the Prop 218 process, the city just cannot react that quickly. Cigus Municipal Water District did step up and they are absorbing those increases from September until January. And so the increases we're going to see won't take effect until January 1st because that's when Cigus will pass them through to us. Then the final item on there within rate setting is this federal stimulus. We do have a number of projects within the capital where we've applied for federal stimulus funds. And so to the extent that those come through, those capital projects will go forward. If those projects aren't successfully funded with federal stimulus funds, then we will be shifting some capital projects around again. So on tiered rates, we are consistent with the other agencies. Both of the private water purveyors in town have gone to tiered rates, the other agencies in Ventura County. On the wholesale rate side, we're looking at a 22% increase on wholesale water rates effective January 1st, 2010. And based on the preliminary numbers that we've received from Metropolitan, we think we'll see a slightly larger, about a 23% increase in January 2011. There's a number of factors, as we mentioned in the last presentation, that are driving water rates. All the different items that we talked about that lead us to declare a level one drought also cost money. The take-or-pay provisions that Mr. Kendall referred to means that that state water that we do not get, we still pay for. And in addition, Metropolitan then has to go out and find other water for us. And that's what's driving a lot of this. In addition, of course, Metropolitan, like many of the agencies, is facing aging infrastructure and having to do more replacements in addition to new storage and delivery. So very briefly, just looking at a chart of our water operating budget, roughly 2/3 is based on purchased water and then about, of the remaining 3, about 6 salaries and benefits and the rest operations and maintenance. The water bill itself is made up of a base rate and a quantity rate. And then the quantity rate includes operation, maintenance, capital and lift. And so I apologize, but I'm going to run through some numbers here, and there are a number of moving pieces. So please be patient as I go through the numbers and I'll try to make it all make sense. But I'm going to go through these in that order, just going through the base rate and then the quantity rate pieces, and then we'll have a quick summary. So on the, on the base rate, the base rate is what we call our ready-to-serv rate. That's the rate that you pay whether or not you use any water or not. So we obviously maintain our system and are ready to serve at any given time. If somebody takes off for six months to Europe and they come home and turn the faucet, obviously that's ready to go. And the base rate, in accordance with AWWA guidelines, you try to cover 30% of your fixed costs with that base rate. Currently, we're a little less than 20, and we're raising these rates so that we'll be covering about 20% of our fixed costs with the base rate. Of the quantity rates, you've got several pieces. The first piece is the operation and maintenance piece. And currently, that's that first column. It's 208 for the operation and maintenance, which includes water purchase. And currently, we have 27 cents, which we refer to as the Cigus Municipal Water District pass-through. That's the piece that was passed by city council last year. And we were able to do that, passing through the wholesale increase only. It was the second year of a budget year, so it did not include any other increases. That Cigus pass-through rate now gets rolled into all of our current, what we're referring to now as our current rate. So the proposed 2009 and 2010 includes that 27 cents. And then on the quantity rate, you also have a capital component. That is what the existing users pay as their portion of capital projects. The recommendation here is to adjust that capital component from 25 cents to 30 cents per HCF. Then the E and R Cost of Living Index would be applied to the connection fee. The connection fee is what future users pay as their portion of capital. So those capital projects that promote and allow for development are paid for by development. And then those that are for supporting the existing system are paid by the existing users. The water capital improvement project, so we did have to move some projects around in order to make this financial plan come together. And so the capital program that was adopted by the council in the spring, we moved some projects out into outer years in order to lower those costs and to keep our rates competitive. And then just a couple of quick graphs, just showing our water cost expenditures, what we anticipate over the next five years. The line on top is the total line. And then the final one, showing how our connection costs have been tracking with CPI over the years and tracking very closely. And then the final item on quantity rates is the lift charge. And the lift charge, we have a separate program that's accounted for with budgeting, includes all our electrical costs and maintenance costs on all our pump stations. And so for those folks who live at a higher elevation where they've got to pump water, they will pay a lift charge and in some cases, more than one lift charge. Those would adjust from 13 cents to 15 cents in the first year and then from 15 cents to 17 cents in the second year. So with all of that, here's how it kind of boils down on this chart. And it shows in the first, currently people are paying about $2.60. When we roll the Cigus increase in and the capital replacements and lift charge in, it all rolls up to $2.75. And so that includes it, breakdown with the tiers. It's a little hard to compare apples and apples since we're going from a, from a flat rate to the tiers, but the next chart shows kind of a little more simply. If you're in tier one, of course, everybody's currently paying 260, then you're going to be paying $2.70 for your water. Tier two, $3.30. And then tier three, $4.10. They range across that from, from the 270 to 410 in the second year, from 304 to 463. And then the next one really shows how this impacts the average user. And so for a low-water user, your increases, currently if you're paying about $36, then as of November of this year, you'd be paying about 41. An average water user uses 23 HCF. They would go from $69.86 to 81.36. So that's about a 16% increase. So we've seen about a 22% increase in our wholesale water. Roughly 2/3 of our budget is that water. And so it's a pretty direct correlation. They end up with about a 16% increase. The other important thing there is that that, the individual at the average would see an $1.50 increase. If that average user were to cut back their water use by 15%, that would be 3.5 HCF, then their bill would stay the same as it is this year. So if somebody is an average water user and they conserve 15% as we've asked, then they won't see an increase at all. So and then just a quick pie chart showing of the increased amount of that $1.50, where is that going? And almost $10 of that goes just straight through, pass through water costs, and then $1.22 operation maintenance and about $1.15 to our capital program. So of the amount that increases, that just explains where that's going. And so on the non-residential, non-residential does not have tiered rates. They have much less ability to reduce their water, much less discretionary water. And so non-residential continues to be a tiered rate. Those increase from their current rates up to 305 and 355, a 17 and 18% increase over the two years. And the next chart just shows where we continue to compare. This is comparing current water rates. And so our current rates put us about in the middle of the pack with the average user, about $69.86. Very close, we're roughly tied with Simi Valley. We continue to be less than the other water purveyors within our city. And so that's, that is it in a nutshell for water. And I'll go through wastewater real quick and I'll be happy to answer any questions. On the wastewater side, we did some of the same that we do with water as far as juggling some capital projects around and moving a few capital projects out. We did that in order that there is no increase on wastewater this year. So currently, residential customer pays $25.45 monthly for their wastewater and they will continue to pay that for the next two years. Future users that are connecting will pay an increased connection fee that's being adjusted in accordance with the E and R index. And as this chart shows, we are the least expensive wastewater purveyor in the area, which is especially good considering the fact that we've got the absolute best facilities and the best service. We are second highest in regards to connection fees, which is consistent with the city's longstanding policy to require development to pay for itself. And so our connection fees on new development have paid their own way and are being adjusted in accordance with the E and R. And so with that, staff recommendation is to approve the 2009 water and wastewater financial plans, set September 22nd as a public hearing date for both water rates and connection fees and for the water, our wastewater connection fee adjustment only. And we're more than happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Questions of staff? Dr. Gillette?
Thanks for the report, Mr. Watkins. Very clear, very concise. Just kind of, on wastewater service charging, on that particular slide, number 20, how far away are we from metering on wastewater so that we, the retired couple that uses X amount of wastewater isn't paying the same rate as the family next door that has eight kids and laundry and everything else going? How far away is that where there's some kind of leveling or equalizing of the appropriate cost for appropriate use?
Yeah, the agencies that charge a different amount for wastewater are typically agencies that also serve water to their entire community. And so what they will do is come up with a portion of their water usage and attribute that to indoor use. And obviously, that's very difficult for us since we only serve water to a portion of our community. I'm not aware of any agencies that actually meter wastewater use. I am aware of ones that do it based upon water sales. And Mr. Gaffney, you've worked in a lot of different agencies. Are you aware of any that actually meter wastewater?
The only, the only customers that get metered are very large customers and it's expensive to meter wastewater. So the vast majority of wastewater agencies levy a flat charge to residential customers. You, the, and it's really related to, so much of the costs of wastewater are fixed. And so it's not directly proportional to the flow. It's kind of related to it, but not directly proportional. So generally, the flat rates are very widely used throughout California. In addition, this agency received a grant and some state revolving fund loans. And so your rates were sent to the state for review for fairness and equity, and they passed that test.
Any other questions? Thanks for the very good report, Mr. Gaffney. Thank you for your report. It's always a pleasure reading that. Well, thank you. Mr. Mitnick, you have a comment?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes, I'd like to point out to council that we put in your packet, at the top of it, a copy of the Standard and Poor's underlying rating upgrade that just came in, came across my desk today. And recently, Standard and Poor's did an upgrade of the underlying rating for the library certificates of participation. And that went up to, I think, AA or AA minus. For the wastewater plant, which is part of what you're hearing tonight, their underlying rating went from a AA minus to a AAA. And it's more than just numbers for you. And if you read through it, and I encourage you to do, it's a very short report, it's the highest possible rating you can get. And it's reflective, and they even make mention of it, of how well-run the wastewater treatment plant is. They also talk about the fact that we are at residential build-out and there's at least 4 million gallons of capacity out there, and yet there's not a lot of development. Putting pressure on that. Rates are stable, very competitive. Lots of positive comments about the environmental programs out there, the energy programs, the solar and cogeneration systems that were put out there, the reserves. It's just some positive comments we want to bring to your attention. There's a lot of negative financial news out there. But in the last few months, you've received exceptional bond rating reports that just happened to come at this time of the year. And I wish Chuck Rogers was here so we could embarrass him a little bit in a positive way, but we'll make sure this information is available on the website. It's just something worth noting, I wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitnick. You have a question? You have a comment?
No question, no comment. I was ready to make a motion.
Please do.
I, I will move staff recommendation of item 9C. And also, I wanted to mention that the improvement of the rating makes me feel very good about approving this tonight. I saw that in the supplemental report and the AAA rating is absolutely excellent. It doesn't get any better than that. So congratulations. And that is very good news. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Comments, the motion? None? Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. We will, in just a moment, pursue our next effort and allow the chairs to change. Okay, we're going to cover consent item 7S that was moved up to a department report. So 9D, Mr. Adams, you got it?
Sorry for that short delay. New computer, trying to get used to it. Good evening, mayor and city council members. Tonight, staff is before you to briefly present the city's investment policy and request the adoption of a resolution approving the updated policy. Above is the summary of the city's investment portfolio as of June 30th, 2009. The city's investment portfolio is over $280 million. As of June 30th, 2009, the return on investments at that point was 2.35%. This represents the city's mix of investments as of June 30th, 2009. The largest portion is in the local agency investment fund, which is the state-run pool. The second largest is public funds CDs, which are 100% collateralized. And then the bottom three, which are 37% of the investment portfolio, is actual securities that are backed by the faith and credit of the U.S. government. For an overview on the policy, policy was established in 1986 and was recently readopted February of this year. That was mainly for the appointment of the treasurer, which currently is myself. Government Code Section 53646 requires the annual adoption of the, or readoption of the policy, and that's by the city council at a public meeting. Usually, as I said, we did in February, and that was for the appointment of the treasurer. We usually do both those at the same time, which is the appointment of the treasurer and the confirmation of the investment policy. Government Code Section Government Code Sections 53600 through 53609 governs the investment of surplus funds. There are other code sections that are referred to in the policy, specifically in the investment of LEAF and public fund CDs. The policy establishes authorized investments, which we'll briefly talk about tonight. Talks about internal controls, reporting, performance benchmarks, and a lot of other Sort of want to emphasize the objectives of the policy. And this is in order. The city's policy and the strategy is for safety, number one. Number two is liquidity. And number three is yield. The city is a buy-and-hold investor. I think that's important to note. Under Section 13 in the, in the policy, we talk about being a buy-and-hold investor, which means that we buy securities and hold them for the full term. All right. Policy update. Just sort of briefly talking about the update that we've done recently. Staff has been working on the policy update for the past eight months. Annually, staff reviews the policy, usually make minor adjustments. This is a review that we've done every, every year, but more importantly, for the fifth year, because we get certification from the Association of the Public Treasurers of the United States. And so we did a full in-depth analysis and review of the policy. Government Code changes often, and so we make sure it's in compliance with the state government code. And the investments in the markets change, so we also make sure that policy is reflective of, reflective of our strategy. Do you want to mention that the Investment Review Committee, which was established in 1997, also reviews the investment policy? And they also have quarterly meetings to ensure that the city's investment portfolio is in compliance with the policy. Later this evening, the council is appointing or reappointing three of the members to the Significant changes. There are several changes that are made. I wouldn't call them significant, but they are changes to the policy. First, and this is really the first three changes that are highlighted in the report, we are adding three, three areas in which the city can invest or buy securities. One is buying bonds, notes from the state of California. The second is buying bonds or notes for the City of Thousand Oaks. And the third is buying bonds or notes of other state, local agencies, other cities that might issue GO bonds or other types of notes and loans. Additional changes, these are mostly clarifications. These are the, the, the next four that are listed on top of the other three. We're clarifying the maximum percentage to be invested in one, commercial paper issuer. The second one is to change the minimum negotiated CDs from a rating that was AA down to AA or a single A for consistency with other investments. The third is to max, add a maximum percentage for portfolio related to medium-term notes. And the fourth and final adjustment is to note that we are annually required to submit to CDAC our investment policy and reports. Excuse me. In summary, this is the policy. This does not reflect our investment strategy. The policy gives us guidelines. Staff implements strategy based on the markets. And finally, city's policy is more restrictive than the government code. And city's investment strategy, again, buy and hold and very conservative. Staff's recommendation tonight is to adopt the resolution. Do you want to make a note that this policy is just part of our, lots of, or part of a lot of our fiscal policies? Good management practices are to review and update these annually. So with that, I'll leave it to council ask questions of staff.
Mr. Adams, thank you very much for that report. I'd appreciate it if you would acknowledge the person sitting next to you and also tell us what her job description is.
Sorry for that. Next to me is Jane Adelman. She's our current treasury assistant with the city. There are, another person that's not here tonight, Paul Farr, who's our investment analyst. He was not able to join us, but Jane is here to provide support and help me with any questions that you may have. And with that said, Paul Farr, who is retiring as of, I believe, the 13th of August, Jane, as part of our succession planning, will be replacing him.
Thank you very much for that. And Jane, congratulations. Nice to have you with us tonight. Okay, questions to staff? Pardon me, Ms. Irwin.
Thank you, Dr. Glancy. Thank you for that, Mr. Adams. But can, I still haven't really heard, why are you making this policy change to now take these bonds, notes, and other indebtedness by the state of California and the city? Can you, can you explain a little? Are you trying to decrease risk? Are you trying to increase yield? Or what is the reason for adding this when we have not been doing it before?
I think when we looked at the policy and compared it to the government code and identifying differences of what other policies, because we talked about a full in-depth review every five years. And one of the things that we do when we start that is to look at other policies by other agencies. Including that, we also look at what the APT has provided as sort of their best practice policy. And when comparing sort of what someone might consider a good policy from other cities, but also an association plus with the government code, those were areas in which we did not have, but made sense. And so we added them as just, to give staff and the treasurer more flexibility to buy these type of securities that may have a better yield and have as much security as others that we're buying. So I don't know if I really clarified that, but I think, one, in looking at other policies that have them, two, the government code allows it, it gives us more flexibility and just gives us options when we're doing investing.
Okay, so you're saying it's without increased risk, so we're still following the same conservative investment strategy?
Yes. Yeah, there's, and I'll, and I didn't really talk much about this, I didn't, but there's several investment options or authorized investments. I think we have a total of 13 categories. Currently, we're only in six of those. There's several categories that at this point, based on the markets, we would not invest in. And that's, that's the difference between the policy and the strategy. And so we're adding them. Right now, we probably, based on the most current ratings by Fitch, they wouldn't meet our investment policy from the state of California because they're below an A. But if things had changed in the next couple of years and they had an appropriate yield, we might purchase those.
Okay, because that definitely puts up a red flag, anything from the state of California right now.
Correct.
But you're just saying it's strategy and that's not necessarily, it would need to meet the other criteria then.
Correct.
And, and just like, what are examples of other, when you're talking about the City of Thousand Oaks, how, how does that work?
Well, the City of Thousand, can use an example of the redevelopment agency issued tax allocation bonds. The city certainly could purchase those type of notes that are under the five-year threshold, just like any other city. Sometimes cities do GO bonds, which are general obligation bonds that are secured with tax revenue. And right now, the policy does not allow us to purchase those, but certainly, you know, from a strategy side, it might make sense based on the yield.
And that could only be between the redevelopment agency and, and the city. It couldn't be?
Could be anything. I'll use one of the things that Jane is pointing out, as the city manager mentioned. The city's wastewater bonds got a AAA rating, very secured, and have a very good yield based on what we issued those bonds back in 98. And those might be securities we would purchase.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bill De La Peña?
Thank you. One quick question.
Sure.
You mentioned that the change minimum negotiable certificates of deposit rating to A for consistency. What is our current policy?
Our current is double, double A. But one of the things in going back with staff and with the IRC is you also try to look at consistency among other types of instruments. And the other instruments that are similar to the negotiated CDs are, are single A rated. And so we're just to, to provide consistency in the policy, trying to make them consistent at, at single A.
But it appears to me that double A would be a better choice.
Well, yes, and, and, yes, I mean, based on ratings, yes. And, and one of the things you have to look at ratings is you also have to look at what you're getting in a yield. If it's negotiated and collateralized, you might invest and get a higher yield on a, on a single A. But again, that goes back to strategy and policy. Where the policy is saying, we're trying to say from a policy side that if we have other similar investments or securities that have a single A, then they should be consistently with single A. Strategy would be, is that where we want to be investing at the point and are we willing to take the risk for the yield? And that's not, right now, the current strategy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions to staff? None? There are no cards on this comment or on this report. So is there a motion afoot? Dr. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does this, this require multiple readings or one, one motion to adopt, does it? One motion? Okay. I move the staff recommendation to adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Comments to the motion? Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And thank you both up there, and congratulations again. Redevelopment Agency reports, we have none. Committee Commission Board reports, Ms. Bill De La Peña and I interviewed for Investment Review Committee. Ms. Bill De La Peña, will you have that report?
Thank you. We indeed did interview several outstanding candidates for the vacancies on the Investment Review Committee appointments or vacancies. And this is a very nice segue, going from the Investment Review Policy. And because these are obviously somewhat more challenging times, and we thought that the, oh, there is, there is, okay. There is a speaker card. But I wanted to mention that we have, we have put into nomination the three incumbents to, for consistency as well, to help us with the somewhat difficult financial situation we currently have. So, and the three incumbents are Mr. John Short, Cody Sorensen, and Richard Law.
Thank you, Ms. Bill De La Peña. We have one speaker on this. Nick Kidway, please.
Nick Egbalk, President of Niberry Park, Honorable Mayor Glancy. Want to congratulate the three winners, I mean, appointees. It's like almost winning a lottery nowadays because there are so few committees. And I just want to make a couple of points with the approval of the committee, committee? City Council. Getting late, I guess, this is the last hurrah, I guess, before the recess. You really need to change this rule that only allows citizens to serve on one committee in order to, it has not worked. I've been speaking against it for years. People say, "You're stupid, wasting your time." But I know, eventually, it will sink and maybe Mr. Fox will see the wisdom in that. I just showed you this saying of, "No quorum for the Arts Commission, no quorum." And I've been on Social Services Funding Committee where it's like a puzzle. If you miss one or two meetings, you're really, not, and they make, some of these people come, they want to, for whatever reason, they make a good case in the interview process. But there's only a few people that are dedicated and that's what you need to do. Also, when you have the updates as to what the applications that have been received, if the committee has been dissolved, you are not an incumbent. So then you, like, if you look for the Social Services Funding Committee, it just says that just new applications have been received. So people who have been on the committee before, they kind of are in a lurch, thinking that maybe incumbents are not, or we are not incumbents, but those people have not applied. So there should be a way to clean that up. I talked to the City Clerk Department and that's how they explained it to me. And in closing, Dr. Glancy, I hope you don't mind, but there should be an ordinance that it should be illegal for somebody to drive in a convertible and enjoy this wonderful weather.
You know I ignore such ordinances, I just do it anyway. Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Ms. Bill De La Peña, you have a motion?
The motion is to reappoint the three incumbents, John Short, Cody Sorensen, and Richard Law, to the Investment Review Committee. And I would like to say that there are many, many interested and very qualified candidates who always apply to various committees, and there is absolutely no shortage of dedicated people wanting to serve the community.
Thank you very much. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Next report is mine. Last Friday and Saturday, Legislative Affairs Manager, Mina Leba, and I went to Sacramento to attend a meeting of, is a consortium of representatives from cities, counties, and school districts. And it was to address the ills of the state of California. The byword was that the California legislature is broken and the membership of legislators do not appear to be capable nor interested in correcting their problems. It was an interesting conference. They anticipated about 200 people showing up. They had over 500. So there's an awful lot of interest out there in this very, very serious problem. There are several topics that were discussed. There's a great report in the Green Package, please don't ignore it. Take it home, take a look at it, because I'm not going to cover all those points. Topics covered to some degree, but there were many more. This is just sort of representative. We talked about term limits as being one of the cause of the ills that we face today. And years ago, when term limits came in, I think many of us thought it was the dawning of a new age. Well, it turned to be the dawning of a terminal age, perhaps. Prop 13 came up, because that also was adjudged to be part of the problem that we're facing today. The initiative process was identified as one of the problems. And so when conversation got to maybe solving the, the problems that we face today by the, through the initiative process, I think that was fairly soundly turned down. And the, certainly the greater percentage of the people there were more in favor of a constitutional convention. And it was noted that this was a very, very complicated question. It was extremely important to identify unintended consequences as best we could and try to minimize any damage that arose and certainly be aware that other unintended consequences could arise through the process of developing a strategy. Unfunded mandates were, were certainly covered because essentially every community in the state is slapped with these ideas of how we should run our, our government and have huge dollar amounts affixed onto it with no funding mandates. Again, as I said, the, is a very, very difficult situation. It's going to take a great deal of public education in order to move forth. One of the values, I think, of a meeting like this is there's an opportunity to hear voiced concerns and possible solutions and ways to address it that you might not, I might not have thought of just because of my exposure, my knowledge, whatever it is. But you hear that many people that, that offer, and I got to tell you, there were a lot of offerings out there. It's a very, very hot topic, very emotional. And obviously, it's a very serious topic. If we're looking at getting ahead of maybe $4.5 million, $5.5 million, we go to great lengths to balance our budget. We have unfilled positions, we've taken some reductions in many departments, and we came up with a balanced budget. The state of California has certainly compromised that accomplishment, but I'm sure we'll deal with it. But it's, it is a shame that an economy that has been not, not too terribly long ago, the seventh to ninth largest economy in the world, and we're essentially bankrupt. So it is an extremely serious problem and it's going to take a lot of work. And I can't say enough of what I found to be the benefit of, of attending that, that session. So I request that the, my report be received. And, Mr. Mitnick, you have comments? My apologies.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, a question was asked, okay, with the, the news that's come out, now- come out, now what? What does that mean to the City of Thousand Oaks? So I'll provide a few comments to give you a sense as to how it's going to hit us. Basically, three, we're to follow on what the mayor was saying. Three words describe the situation for us: loan, raid, and seizure. And what does that mean? And there, and ultimately, there are going to be two words for the long-term solution for us, and that'll be financial independence, and I'll hit on that in a minute. As the mayor was explaining, this is the proposed, the proposal that came out of Sacramento. It's still subject to the Assembly and the Senate approving it and then getting approved by the governor. So assuming that that happens, and the numbers are still a little shaky, you'll read about this tomorrow in, in the Ventura County Star, because there's an in-depth story being done. We're not quite sure the total hit to us. It could be upwards of 9.4 million. And let me explain. On the Prop 1A side, which is primarily the general fund and to some extent, the library fund, we're looking at a hit in the range of 2.3, 2.5 million dollars. That's a loan. So John Adams, our Finance Director, will book it as a receivable in which it will be repaid with interest. We'll believe that when we see it, but we'll treat it that way for the time being. Now, that 2.3 million, if the general fund piece is, say, 2 million, that's just a few percentage points of the total general fund budget, maybe 3, 3% or so. But it is still significant because we had to do an incredible amount of belt tightening just to balance our current budget. The other piece, and then that's the loan piece. The raid piece is the Highway Users Trust Fund, the gas tax money, and that, that's looking at about 2.1 million. That's based on population, whereas Prop 1A is based on property taxes. Now, this money's significant for us because the Finance Director and I were talking, we're trying to get a sense as to what our current revenue estimate is for the gas tax fund. We think it's about 6 million. So if we lose 2.1, that's about a third of it. And what do we use that money for? To repair our streets, the slurry, the slurring of the streets, reconstruction of the streets, sidewalks, curves, gutters, that, that type of thing. That money will be taken. Poof, gone. Is it one-time? Is it recurring? It appears to be one-time. If it ends up being recurring, that's a problem. How will that impact the community? Believe me, every, every street, every resident in this city will see the impacts of this, especially if it ends up becoming recurring. The seizure piece, that's the redevelopment agency, and it's still a little unclear as to how that's going to shake out. But we're looking at a hit to the redevelopment agency upwards of $5 million. And that's roughly a third to a quarter of the, of the total tax increment that flows in. And that, that would have a significant impact on our, on our affordable housing projects and our ability to satisfy the state's rent of numbers. So a total of upwards of 10 million. Hopefully, it'll be less than that. Okay, so what are our options as a municipality? If you were following the news today, you heard counties and cities up and down the state with all kinds of reactions. One option is we could do a legal challenge. LA County's talking about this, the League of California Cities is talking about it, and I'm sure others are as well. We'll weigh the pros and cons of doing that. It's too early to say if, if that's a viable option for us, but certainly out there. There are basically three options. That's one. The second option would be, okay, accept it, pay the money, use reserves or, or whatever, and then simply do nothing. The third option is accept it, pay the money, and then take proactive steps to ensure we're in a better position going forward. And this council has directed that we start moving in that direction, and that's the sole issue of financial independence, so we won't be as, we won't be so subject to the whims of the state, and they're constantly turning to us to, to balance on their budget. So we, we prefer to be part of the solution. So future steps, right now, City Council, there's not much you can do right now. We need to wait for the, the final outcome of the Assembly and Senate vote to get a sense as to what, how it's going to actually impact us. We come back from the summer recess in September, we'll do an update report for council, or September or October. And we'll, and the, the options we'll have to look, go through to come up with these numbers is the, look at the use of one-time reserves, delayed capital projects, program cuts, further position reductions, or, or other options. There's no need to panic at this point. We have to get a sense as to what's in front of us, and then we'll come back with an update report. Thank you for your indulgence. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike Opel, do city manager follow-up and et cetera?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, no follow-up from comments or requests from the public in tonight's City Council meeting. By way of upcoming issues, announcements, no City Council, oh, I shouldn't say no, we're going to go into the summer recess, and the next council meeting will be on September 8th. And at that time, what we have on the agenda potentially is accommodation for Zach Zunderland, young Thousand Oaks resident, 17-year-old who sailed across the world on his own. He, his mother was working with us to get him here tonight, but as you heard from the mayor earlier, he decided to go on the Letterman Show instead. So hard to believe that he chose that option, but we can live with it. So hopefully, he'll be here on, on September 8th at the beginning of that meeting. Two public hearings that we know of at this point in time, both dealing with mobile home issues out at Vallecito and Canal Mobile Home Park. So that'll likely occupy the majority of, of council's time at that meeting. And by way of department reports, we will present to you the two-year status update, final update on the citywide goals and objectives for the two fiscal years that ended on June 30th. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Ms. Abano, you want to announce closed session?
Oh, you know what?
Yes. Dr. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wonder if we could ask the city manager to reference the August 3rd, consistent with this discussion, the August 3rd meeting at Cal Lutheran on the Constitutional Convention. It's going to be the only one, I understand, in Southern California, so.
Okay. Go ahead.
We, that is correct. Cal Lutheran is doing that, and we have representatives attending, so.
People are interested, it's at 8:30 to 11:30 to RSVP. It's at, at CLU, there is going to be an educational piece and then a program where there's actually going to be a panel discussion, discussion on possible constitutional congress being called and what would be some of the things that they'd be looking at. And it's at the Ludwig Event Center, and it's August 3rd, Monday, 8:30, 11:30. And you could probably check CLU's website, I would hope, to be able to find out who to RSVP to. Or you could check even the city manager's office, who does have the press release on it.
I would hope that, given the significance of that discussion, we can put something in reference on our website too, in, in any way that the public is, as much of the public as possible can be informed, because I understand this is going to be the only forum on this by those organizations that are starting this in Southern California, at least at this time. So it's, it's an excellent opportunity. Thank you.
And thank you for reminding me. Ms. Abano, you want to announce closed session?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and members of the public, council will be going into closed session. There are five cases that will be discussed, anticipated litigation initiation, one case under government code, Section 54, 956.9C. The rest of the four cases are under government code, Section 56, I'm sorry, Section 54, 956.9A. And those are the Newberry LLC versus City of Thousand Oaks, Weatherly versus City of Thousand Oaks, Chateau Holding versus City of Thousand Oaks, and Vallecito Mobile Home, I'm sorry, Vallecito Mobile Estates LTD versus City of Thousand Oaks. There will be nothing to report out at the end of that, and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Gillette, you have the first adjournment for tonight.
Thank you very much. This is the adjournment in memory of Kevin Luke's, Canal Recreation and Park District Recreation Supervisor in charge of sports and aquatics. Kevin was a CRPD employee for 27 years. He worked on the community pool at CLU from its inception to completion, and he was an integral part of the adult sports leagues and youth sports camps. Kevin earned his Bachelor of Arts degree in history from California State University in Northridge. He was raised in Michigan and Wisconsin. He moved to California in 1974. He began his time with the district as a scorekeeper and sports official in 1977, and in 1982, he was hired as a recreation leader. He was promoted to recreation coordinator two years later, and then to recreation supervisor in 1986. His contributions to the community include running the sports and aquatics operations as well as successfully coordinating the field distribution process for community athletic groups. He was active in the Channel Cities Municipal Athletic Association and Southern California Municipal Athletic Federations. Kevin was a recipient of numerous awards for these organizations as a result of his expertise, hard work, and dedication. Kevin and his wife of 28 years, Lauren, have two college-age children, Ryan and Kelly. On behalf of the City Council, I'd like to express our sincerest condolences to Kevin's family. His generous heart and sense of humor will be missed by all that knew him. Thank you.
And thank you. Our second adjournment tonight is in memory of Doris G. Mattson, mother of Thousand Oaks Police Chief Jeff Mattson. Born in Long Beach, California in 1925, Doris also lived in Woodland Hills, eventually settling in the city of Ventura. She was stationed in Long Beach during her two and a half years of service in Navy Waves during World War II. Doris met Earl Mattson, and they married in 1948. They celebrated 27 years of marriage, and together they raised their two sons, Jeff and John. Doris took great pleasure in her life as a homemaker and hostess for her husband's business associates. She also was a gardener and enjoyed tending to her flower garden. In her younger years, Doris was a great tennis enthusiast and enjoyed teaching tennis in her backyard. In her later years, Doris would joke that she kept her forearm in good condition by operating the Laughlin shot, slot machines. Doris passed away at the age of 84. On behalf of the Thousand Oaks City Council, I would like to express our deepest condolences to Jeff and his entire family.
Hello, I'm Mark Watkins, Public Works Director for the City of Thousand Oaks. I'm taking this opportunity to inform you of the city's new water conservation ordinance that took effect